Okay, looks like we're back. I'm going to call to order the work session agenda. I'm sorry, the work session meeting for May 26, 2021 on our agenda. We have one item, but others may be added. We'll start with Ms. Gregory. The last batch of COVID-19 claims. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Yes, this is the last batch of claims, which is just kind of exciting to wrap up. Hopefully, all the assistance provided today and we're going to provide soon has been really beneficial. But I thought I'd start by just going over our, the examples we provided, the business entities and social service organizations. So the examples of approved expenses for reimbursement. We had four that we provided. We said cleaning or disinfection supplies, personal protection equipment, costs incurred to clean a facility due to COVID-positive employees, and costs associated with business model change. So just so that that's fresh in our minds as we begin to review. And you know, that's not all-inclusive, just some examples we provided. Anyhow, you probably saw the numerous claims and applications received in your email. There's 35 that we have today to look at. And that total is $292,442.67. I would like to note that is the adjusted total. You know, after going through and kind of making adjustments where, where they needed to occur. So looking at the spreadsheet I provided. I'm going to pull it up now. And I have it printed, actually. But anyhow, if we want to start with St. Thomas. They just had the normal, normal things we've been seeing. They provided an invoice for commercial service to install some air filtration to their business or to their church. So that is, that's all they claimed. So that's pretty straightforward. Moving on, we have Tommy D's. It's a windows, doors, and more business. They also had commercial service install some air filtration, and there's an invoice for that. Going down the list here, we have Faith Lutheran. They also had air purification expenses. So that was related to clean air in their preschool and childcare classrooms, and also in the church office. And then Elaine's Cleaning. Also invoice provided for some PPE and so forth. Need more coffee, again with the commercial service invoice for air filtration. That's been a popular item these days. Convention and Visitors Bureau, air purification, once again, the expense claims. They also did like a protection plan as well. Okay, Minero County Public Library. Let's see here, they had some bags for curbside service, excuse me. Some hooks just to, you know, assist with kind of a change in business model, just to handle their supplies. Sand, hand sanitizer, and then speakers, which aid with communication as we're all distanced these days still. Litwin Enterprises, air filters and PPE. Farm Restaurants. For those restaurants, outdoor seating has been the common theme, and that's what their purchase was for. Okay, moving right along, those are kind of the ones that you, that we visited last week. So just kind of quick overview. Any questions so far? Not yet? Okay. So moving right along, we have Minero County Use Soccer. They, let's see here, had some web-based charges just for like, you know, online things as we progressed, you know, with a business model change for them. So they had some ongoing programs, just to, you know, website update, webcam stuff, Zoom. They claimed in-office whiteboard, masks, and certain office supplies just to assist with working from home. They also purchased an online training app for online travel soccer to help with their program. Zoom monthly payments, again, sanitization stuff, and PPE. RCB, more of the same, some tech supplies, cleaning supplies, PPE, mobile forms to transition to virtual. So a lot of the same that we've been seeing. Solution Tree, again, a lot of the same tech, cleaning supplies, and PPE. Campus tutoring, again, web hosting, tech, tech equipment, and I think they have some PPE on, actually, no, theirs is all tech-based. So as they transitioned to campus tutoring. Uptown, again, it was the outdoor seating equipment, umbrellas, patio tables and chairs, patio bases, umbrella bases, I'm sorry, rope barriers, canopy tents, plexiglass, more of the usual we've been seeing. Cleaning Revolution, chemicals, cleaning machine, that sort of thing. Bloomington Playwrights, they did the air filtration, two units. Marx United Methodist Air Purification System. Again, Bloomington Beauty. They had a, it looks like a monthly cleaning service that came in and kind of fogged all of their products and clothing to disinfect as, you know, fingers would touch and so forth. So it was a monthly service that they had. And they also had some supplies for remodeling and restructuring their business to be COVID-friendly and PPE for customers and staff. Farm, another, so there's two claims for Farm this round. The second claim for Farm is more of the same, some chairs, some cleaning supplies, PPE, hand sanitizer, et cetera. Christian Student Fellowship, PPE, touchless dispensers, disinfecting equipment and services. That's about it for them. Bloomington Handmade Market. They had to have some equipment to kind of barricade the entrance, to kind of keep people safe and distanced as they had their market. Let's see. Hickory Audiology. They purchased some touchless equipment, some cleaning supplies, some PPE. That was the theme for them. University Risk Management, sanitizing wipes, a webcast subscription, green screens, laptops. So a lot of tech on that one. Function Brewing. They had outdoor seating equipment, some takeout supplies and PPE as well.
And you skipped Crazy Horse.
Crazy Horse.
Right above, right above Function.
Let me.
It's on our list anyway.
Yeah, sorry about that. I have several stacks here, so it's coming.
That's all right.
Give me one second.
That's okay, you can do it later. I just wanted to make sure you knew.
Yeah, yes, we will go back to that one. I just want to pull it out so I don't forget that.
No problem.
Okay. Should be the next, here we go. Okay, let's just do that now, just so it's. Okay, they had another commercial service invoice for air filtration. So that one just got missed, I apologize for that. So yeah, that was the entirety of their claim. And then, so I did the, we went over Function Brewing. Dimension Mill. So they had some tech subscriptions and fees. Those are proximity monthly platform fee, Nest Aware monthly. Let's see, three weeks of disinfection cleanings, and then another six weeks of disinfection cleanings, all within the approved period. Well, it goes through May 2, but so there's two, you know, a couple of days there that wouldn't apply. But, and then some PPE. Jerry Miller. If you recall, he teaches music lessons. He has a private business. So he is claiming a laptop, wireless keyboard and mouse, and protection plans associated with that. AEA Designs. Let's see here. So tech equipment. Was a big tech equipment purchase.
What, can you tell us a little bit more about this company?
Let me pull that one so I can go a little further here on that. Here we go. So. So this one is. Okay, there's an extended warranty, but it's a PolyPrint Echo 2 with new Snap-on magnetic platen system. So that is. Okay, so this is, this company does like screen printing. It's a local business that does screen printing on t-shirts and other items for like sports teams, for example. So they found that they were not able, once they went online, to process the demand as quickly as necessary. They found that, you know, as they transitioned to online orders, people kind of expected things more immediately than they did when they were, you know, coming into the business. So they upgraded their equipment, and that was their claim. So it's just an equipment upgrade so they could process things more quickly, process their screen printing. So as far as, you know, specifics on which, I mean, I can, this is on Dropbox. If you want to look at specifically like all the items, there's ink, there's machinery and equipment. But, you know, just depending on how you feel about that, if that's a good claim. Moving on, we have Catherine J. Borges, I think is her last name. She has a business that mediation and animal therapy. So she had some more tech equipment to aid with online business. That was her previous claim as well. So this is just, this time, a camera, tripod, portable hard drive case, lots of camera equipment, a new laptop, a laptop protection plan, USB port, card reader, wireless camera, shutter release, remote control. And her statement is just, I am a mediation instructor and wellness practitioner. And she goes on to explain exactly what she does. Malibu. They have been using single-use paper menus, so that expense is on there, disinfectant, and then PE. See here. Sorry, trying to keep up with both of my stacks, bear with me. Okay, and then commercial service, I believe, is the next one? Yes, commercial service provided PPE to their employees and I guess customers as needed. Hand sanitizer. They, it looks like they installed a GPS in their own office, which is part of the air filtration stuff. So the four laptops are included with this as well, other cleaning supplies, some ink cartridges to work from home, a thermometer, baggies to distribute face masks. But that is the theme of theirs, mostly PPE, and then some cleaning supplies mixed in. C3. They had a charge here to assist with their like QR code and web, and website for their online menu, and then tent rentals. And then they also had a fee for a temporary structure variance application that they needed, I guess, to be able to seat and serve alcohol outside. Create a Smile. Obviously, a dentist's office. They had PPE expenses, as well as some cleaning supplies, alcohol, like germicide type things. They have like a dry oral cup, which I found, I think there, if you've been to the dentist lately, they're having you like as a COVID-friendly procedure, swish around, a special mouthwash related to COVID. So more of that type of thing. And I think this was for three practitioners, if I remember correctly, for, in the one office. And then I think this brings us to RVC Holdings. Yes, our, oh no, that was the C3, I apologize. We are now to the Hotels of, Motels of Bloomington, which is the Home2 Suites in Town. This is the one that we began to discuss last meeting, but decided to continue because it needed a little bit more review and adjustments. So I spent quite a bit of time going through this and editing from the previous spreadsheet provided. I actually was able to look up a lot of these item numbers provided on the invoices for these companies, from these companies. And I also called the customer service just to make sure the items that we're looking at are appropriate. It's hard to tell with the way some of these things are abbreviated. So some of the items I eliminated that I can easily add back in, should you wish to do so. Washcloths, which they weren't like a cleaning cloth. From what I gathered from the customer service that I called, they were actually like, you know, for hotel rooms, washcloths that they provide, you know, for guests to use. Tissues and toilet paper, I eliminated as well. I, you know, like, like we discussed before, I don't know, I don't, there's no reason to believe they were housing the homeless or people assisting the public, you know, during the COVID crisis. And that's why these items were claimed. They're, they're just not eligible, in my opinion. I can't rationalize a reason why we would support that. Additionally, they included tax for like an entire invoice instead of just like the items that are appropriate. So I took the tax off as well. Other items that I excluded, stain remover. I mean, I, I don't think that is appropriate. They also had specialty laundry detergent that was for stain remover, like specifically makeup-removing laundry detergent and stuff like that, which I also don't feel is a COVID expense. They also had other detergent, which I can rationalize as they were probably washing things more often, I would hope, during the pandemic. But the specialty laundry detergent didn't seem appropriate. Let's see here, hand. Let's see here, hand sanitizer was included. Oh, air fresheners were also on here. So it wasn't like a Laitisol spray, for example. It was like the air fresheners that are in the bathroom that, you know, make it smell pleasant. Deodorant, lotion, shower gel, Mr. Clean Magic Erasers, I also eliminated. They had lint rollers and refills, I eliminated. I saw that, I think perhaps by accident, disinfecting wipes were, were taken off from, I think by Dee. So I did not add those back in, but I highlighted them, so we can add them back in. If you would like to do so, those are appropriate, in my opinion. Let's see here, more toilet paper, guest laundry bags and Band-Aids were also included. You know, those laundry bags that are in hotel rooms, the plastic that are so nice to bring your dirty clothes home. And I couldn't find a reason for those as well. Again, more facial tissue, toilet paper, coffee cups. Which, I mean, I guess we could rationalize coffee cups as everything, you know, is kind of disposable that we're using these days. However, I think that's something they provide anyway with their, you know, their morning breakfast. And it's not part of their transformation or business model change, in my opinion. They also included $544 for wireless thermostats and a portable heater and fan. So that was, I found, you know, that I excluded over $6,000 of items. You know, I don't want to necessarily pass judgment, but overall, I don't think they put much time or care into, into providing this claim. So anyhow, that pretty much summarizes and wraps up, you know, the detail. I'm happy to entertain any questions, I have it all in front of me here, so I can go through it with you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Jones.
Well, I guess I was wondering if Faith Lutheran, their daycare is it only for members of the church? Or do they also serve the public?
Is he on the call? My understanding is that, I mean, it's a, it's a private daycare. But my understanding is they do serve the public, it's not just for parishioners. However, I think Dee could probably describe further if she's available.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Jones?
Not right now.
Commissioner Giffens?
I am concerned about the things that were submitted by Motels of Bloomington, for sure. And I want to thank her for being so thorough in how she investigated this.
Yeah, I know Ms. Owens had a lot of conversation with them as well and trying to winow this down to just the things that are eligible. Yeah, I think, I think that's. Yeah, I think, I think I'm going to have questions about a few of these. Maybe we can just email these questions to you and maybe also Ms. Owens at the same time. And have, and have some better, there might need to be some follow-up, but I think just reviewing those emails will be helpful. Now, I, I did not see that email, so I'm sure it's in my email box with a million other things, and I've missed it, and so I'm going to go back and look for it.
And I'll present, how about, so it's at the top there for you.
No, no, no reason. Yeah, no, I, I think, I think I'll find it. I'm sure I'll find it, so yeah, not worried about that. Okay, so we can send questions on, and then, and then we can, this is on our agenda for the regular meeting next week. Everyone okay with that? That was our plan? Okay.
My only other, just side note here. We do have currently, in our COVID business and social service line, we have $129,742.32. Now, there is money available in other COVID lines, but I sent this with the email, so you'll be able to look at everything as well. But yeah, I know it's a lot to take in, I don't hesitate. You can call me, email me, whatever you'd like to do.
So this will feel like I'm in a convertible going 90 miles an hour and, you know, it's just like, it's all coming at you.
Yeah.
Ms. Purdy, did you want to add something?
I was just going to clarify that it's going to be, we can do a account transfer from one of our other accounts to meet the needs for this particular distribution, so it's not a problem.
Sounds good. Okay, great. Thank you so much, thank you so much, Ms. Gregory. I appreciate all the time you took today, and you're amazing, so thank you for that, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's see if there's anything else. Ms. Purdy, do you know of anything else that we need to cover? I know we've got an appointment to make. Is there anything else?
I do not have anything prepared for you guys today.
Is there any other department who's on this call, who has something else?
I have a really quick item, and I just want to make you guys aware of a situation. We have a contract for the risk assessment at the Quarry Properties. We got reached out to by that vendor. Their, the report was due May 31st, they're requesting a little bit more time. So expect maybe on your June meeting to have an amendment to that. It'll technically be after the term, but I just wanted to make, after the report's due. But I, we are aware of it, and I just want to make sure you guys are aware that that request has been made.
Okay, and it's going to be a date certain again?
It will be. My, my thought is, I think they just need a couple more weeks. So I thought maybe doing it through June gives them the, the time they need, as well as gives us a date certain.
Yeah, and to be fair, they added another sort of component of this stuff. And so I, it's better to just take the time and do it right. So I appreciate the diligence on, on both sides of that, so yeah.
All I wanted to make you aware of.
Great, thank you. Other comments, questions? Ms. Jones, did you want to make a motion on an appointment?
Yes, I'd like to move that we appoint Jim Whitlatch to the South Central Community Action Program for the remaining of a vacant term.
Second.
All right, we have a motion as second. Mr. Cockrill, will you please call the role on this appointment?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Thanks, everyone. And just to note that you'll be seeing, for all our residents, that you'll be seeing some information on annexation posted on our website very soon. So, and all right, that's it for today. Thanks, everyone, we are adjourned. Thank you.